Called to order the City Council meeting at Trinity, North Carolina for October the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Want to welcome our visitors and our guests. And we're going to stand and say the pledge of allegiance, and then Mr. Welborn is going to have him.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, whose republic stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, it's no accident that we are all here in this room tonight, working for one goal, for the betterment of Trinity, Lord, for the citizens of Trinity. Lord, we ask that you guide our decisions, Lord, lead us and guide us in our paths that we take. Lord, all the different beliefs and emotions and what we're going to review and cover in this meeting tonight, Lord, help it all to be for your glory and also for the benefit of Trinity and the citizens. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Okay, guys, next is review, amend if needed, or approve the proposed regular agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll second it.
No, we got to put a closed session. I'm told by city manager we need to have a closed session, so I need a motion to add a closed session at the end of nine.
I make a motion that we go into closed session for personnel matters for city manager at the end of the meeting tonight.
I got a first and a second, all in favor? Okay. Now, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as it has been amended.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second it.
I have a motion second, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda would be public comment. I have signed up here Mr. Danny Phillips, if you'd come and state your name and your address at the podium, and we might give you three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate all the council members tonight. You know, we are blessed for this. My name is Danny Phillips, and I live at seventy-one ninety-one hundred plus five and two. And I serve as treasurer for Trinity. And we are all volunteers and volunteers here to serve our community. And that's a dirty word, but we serve a lot, a tremendous lot of things that you probably don't have ever heard of or seen, but we are a presence in the city. My purpose is coming before the city council, and I just request continued funding for the food for our Christmas and Trinity annual event. This is our twelfth year hosting this event. Some of you may have never been there, but some of you have. And I appreciate everybody that has been in our event. It's the first Thursday in December every year. And we don't have to put an ad in the newspaper, we put up signs that kids show up for that, parents shows up for that, grandmothers. It's a, just a huge event that you get a blessing if you've got an hour to attend on Thursday night, December the fourth, I think it is, this year. But the city has partnered with us for the last eleven years, and we're very grateful for that, very grateful. We cannot handle an event of this magnitude without the support of the city. Every child that comes to this event receives a twenty-five dollar gift or toy, a hot dog meal with milk dessert, a treat bag, including apples and oranges, and a visit and a picture with a Santa Claus that looks just exactly like the real Santa Claus. In addition, the kid, we have a drawing, and we usually have eight to ten bicycles. So eight to ten children walk out of there with a brand-new, sweet bicycle. Our event tennis has increased every year, but our budget has just not been able to keep up. And two thousand twenty-two, we serve nine kids, plus their families. And twenty twenty-three, we serve a hundred and twenty children and families. Two thousand twenty-four, we serve a hundred and ninety children and their families. We estimate two hundred different kids and possibly two hundred adults for this coming December. That is humongous increase, percentage and number. For the past eleven years, the city has funded this meal and back treats while the Friends of Trinity, along with the city, has provided this twenty-five dollar gift for each child. You can read the rest, but if you're, this past year, we were fifteen hundred dollars to the red. That is a huge amount that we got to undertake for Friends and Trinity. So my plea tonight is if the city will continue to fund the meal for Christmas and Trinity. We've done this for eleven years, we want to continue that fund. Any questions that somebody would like to ask?
How much roughly is the meal? Is it?
We think it's around fifteen hundred dollars. We're supposed to get that exact information. It cost us eight thousand dollars to put on this event. That includes toys, the meal, the treats, the insurance. There's a lot of factors behind this thing that goes into play with that. Any more questions?
Is that what it cost last year with the amount of people that come?
It was actually seventy-five hundred dollars.
And so you're anticipating another fifty people?
Yes. Okay.
If I may, just for the council's record, you do have fifteen hundred dollars in your department if you choose to release it for this purpose. We don't need a budget amendment to do that. You have two line items, one with six hundred and one with a thousand, they're for a community promotion. You did appropriate six thousand five hundred dollars to the Friends of Trinity for they use however they want to. So if you see, they have a lot of, the car show was just last weekend, wasn't it?
It's just coming Saturday.
Oh, the car show is this weekend? So, so all you have to do is give me and Crystal guidance, and we'll release the money to you.
Okay.
When we discussed this while we were doing the budget, did we not discuss, and we increased the amount that we gave them this past year, or for, in this budget, was more than what we gave last year?
Yes, it is more than what we gave.
To include Christmas and Trinity, and then we took that out of our budget?
Yes, that is right. We did do the sixty-five hundred, and that was supposed to be for whatever they wanted to use it for, when the budget works off.
But the budget, but the budget that they gave us of what their expenses were, we pulled out of that and said, okay, we'll fund this and this and this, and the total came to sixty-five hundred dollars. The Christmas was included.
Yeah, personally, we talked about the different events, but I think what had happened was, we talked about just giving them the sixty-five hundred, and then they can use it however they want to.
Right, right.
As far as for any of the events.
Right, okay.
Well, we have money in various community things, but that'll be up to council, but fifteen hundred dollars, we've done this forever.
Can I make an additional comment, or is that a no?
Sure.
We, there are some, you know, we keep up the community park. I don't know if anybody knows where the Trinity Community Park is. We keep that up. We keep the little law cabin on sixty-two, we keep that up. Right now, it, we'd like to do a redo that a little bit, so it will stand another forty or fifty years. That price tag is eight grand, but, you know, at this time, we don't have the eight grand to do that. So I know sixty-five hundred is a lot, but what we do, what we need to do, it's not near enough, to be honest with you, but, you know, we'll, you know, we'll do a little here, we have the pancake supper, we have the car show coming up Saturday, sometimes we have a spaghetti dinner thing, and it raises some, but, you know, very little. And you got people, our volunteers, spends many hours behind the scenes that you don't see.
Yeah, I see them mowing up at the church.
Okay, and.
I raise the mowing up ourselves in the couple, three weeks, but.
Most of the time, something is going on behind the scenes that, you know, you really just don't know about. So whatever the city says, we'll stand with it. We're just very appreciative if you can do any amount. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Well, I think that's something we do need to talk about, because it is a good thing for, I don't worry if the rest of you visited, but what we need to do, Bob, we gotta make a motion or talk about it later?
Well, if they want to, Mayor, the money is, the money is in your department, I'm sorry, the money is in the department, Mayor, but since the council approved the sixty-five hundred dollar outlay, I didn't feel I could add any more to it without having them come to the council. If you want me to release it, I can make a check. We've already presented the sixty-five hundred, which was budgeted. These were appropriated funds, but they're not for a specific item.
So you can use it for this.
Right, yes, sir. If you want to use it for that purpose, you can.
I hate to use all at one time, just, and, because I always like to have some in the reserve in case something comes up. I know it's October, but my thoughts are if we use part of the funds or one of the funds, you said there was a thousand, and then there were six hundred?
Yes, sir.
So if we used one of, I'm just putting it out there, use one of those to help offset some of the costs, what's council feel?
Is that all that's left in there? Is it one thousand and six hundred in that particular fund?
That is correct.
That's it?
And that would last us through June?
Yes, June thirty, yeah.
Yeah.
And they have a whole lot more functions we do, but it always helps to keep a nickel in the bucket in case we lose them.
Yeah.
I agree with you. I don't think we should deplete it.
Yeah, use some, but not, and just, in case there is another need, let's say the, like, I love the little prayer church, and in May, maybe there's something that happens, there's termites or something, and so we might need to help with some of that. That's just my thoughts, to keep some of that potentially.
And I've been involved before, Mayor, where the cities, you know, basically issued a challenge grant where we'll do, we'll do two-thirds of it if you find a third, or half, fifty-fifty, or something like that. That may, may, that may leave you some for, I don't know what happens up here, Christmas is a big event for everybody, obviously, but.
I would love if Mohawk helped with the Christmas event.
I just throw that out.
And I know it's easy for me to say, well, go approach Mohawk or one of our industries around here, but I would love to see an industry help support a community like that, but.
It would do.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you, have you guys ever contacted Mohawk or J-Watt, or you got a builder around here building a thousand houses a year?
It's hard to get in to Mohawk, it's levels that have to go through, and I have sat down and talked with them for a length of hours, or the chief, we contact the chief, we try to get them the, for us, and all they want to do is give us cups, you know, we live on a business sheet in Trinity.
Yeah.
They're hard, and it's all corporate, you have to go through corporate and everybody else, and get lots of the transaction, we have contact there.
What about the cookout guys? Have you talked with them?
Yes, we have.
Got anywhere with them at all?
No, no, sir. If you could pay, if you could help us, we would appreciate it, because last year, our committee consists of about eight members, three of us do ninety-five percent of work, just like the church or anywhere else, and we contributed over six hundred hours of manpower here in Trinity taking care of all this stuff that most people don't know anything about, but, you know, what can you do? When they say no, it comes out of our pockets, so.
I like the idea that John had about a challenge match. I mean, if we give two-thirds of it, you think you guys could raise the rest of it?
We'll have to.
We'll make a motion. We'll move on.
I make a motion that we allow one thousand dollars to the Friends of Trinity.
I got a motion for a thousand, contribute to community activities through the, through the Christmas thing, might I have a second?
Sixteen hundred in there, Crystal?
That is correct.
I'll be okay with half of it.
Yeah.
What's two hundred dollars, Mr. Welborn?
Eight hundred.
Might need two hundred more after that.
All right, I have a motion for a thousand, so do I have a second?
Can we amend the, trying to like Roberts rules, amend the first motion to say?
Yeah, amend it.
He can.
Yeah, to do eight hundred.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to eight hundred.
All right, we have a second? All in, all in favor? All right, guys, that's the best I can do for you.
I just, and again, I think about things that make, it's a long time between now and June, and if there's something with the prayer house or the park or something, yeah, so I'm just, yeah.
Well, I tell you what, guys, I ain't, I ain't much, but I can beg, I'll visit some of these people around here and see if, because I know, I know the manager, the head dog at Mohawk, not that I'm buddies, but I know him, I've talked to him, met him a time or two, so we'll knock around and see.
I would like to get you guys' information, phone numbers, so I can help out on site.
All right, do we have any other public comments before we move on? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. All right, folks, we need to approve the consent agenda, which the city manager outlined during his time. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you kindly. All right, the next we have is recognition and presentation, and John's going to take care of that for us.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm proud to announce that the City of Trinity has been awarded a five hundred thousand dollar, send your packets behind item, book, behind item number six, five hundred thousand dollar grant from the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. I'm also proud to announce that the City of Trinity was the highest points getter. So we had an outstanding presentation, outstanding grant application, and I thank the council, and thank Jay Dale, who led the team, the local team here, and those folks that came out, they did an outstanding job, and it's really something to be proud of, and as we continue to grow, we'll, that'll be used for many generations in the future. So I just bring that to the council, Mayor. There's no action on that now, there's, you'll get a real big thick packet of stuff, Mayor, that you and Crystal will have to sign. So congratulations to the City of Trinity.
All right, next on the agenda is review of the fund budget policies.
Jumped over one more, Mayor, I'm sorry, one more. I want to announce, and I'd ask her to come up, because really.
Oh, the GFOA award.
Yes. Like to ask her to come up, please. It is my extreme honor, distinguished honor, to recognize our finance officer. All right, I'm going to hug you in a non-threatening, non-harassing kind of way, because I've been to the class. Mayor, we are so fortunate to have Crystal in an era where it's hard to find folks, hard to find people, and you only have to look at our neighbor Randeman and see what they've been going through with their financial. We are the smallest entity in North Carolina to win the Triple Crown Award, and just like the Triple Crown Horse Race, that's the three top finance awards presented by the Government Finance Officers Association in the United States of America. So we have won the Certificate for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Now, I liked to brag when I was Ashburn City Manager, because we had won that twenty-six times in a row. I got nothing to brag about around Crystal and for Ashburn. I'm going to go to Ashburn tomorrow, and I'm going to brag about how well we do the Trinity.
Nice, nice, yeah.
She won, we won the Popular Annual Financial Reporting Award, that's the report that goes to the citizens and the distinguished budget. So it is my distinct honor that we recognize our friend, our fellow public servant, our finance officer for the job she does.
Who's got the camera?
Mayor, before we move off that, I want to put this in, in context, there are nineteen thousand, plus or minus nineteen thousand city, towns, and villages in the United States, nineteen thousand, less than one percent win the Triple Crown. And you think about, that goes all the way from Manhattan to Manhattan, Kansas, to Manhattan Beach, California, and here, right here. So that's quite an accomplishment, and we're very proud and very lucky to have you working with us.
Thank you.
That's all I have on that item, Mayor.
Okay. Well, we got the review of balance, fund balance policies and budget amendment, and.
All right, Mayor, this item, I've tried during my tenure here to present everything that I could find in front of the council. I'm doing this so the council knows where they stand, and also, so, you know, minutes, so the new city manager has it all laid out for them. I'm trying just to be a bridge between the old and the new. So I want to talk about our fund balance a minute. So our fund balance policy that's passed by the council is a hundred percent of general fund. So our current fund balance, and the general fund is six point six million, twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. Now, I laugh at Crystal all the time, because that's obviously an accountant's number. To me, that's just six point six million, that's the city manager's number, okay? We do have a little money in the sewer fund, twenty percent, twenty percent's the minimum, we're at fourteen. Now, we're going to have to use some of that sewer fund money, even if it's not, we don't have our minimum established, because we're going to have to get off the general fund supporting the sewer fund, I keep telling you guys that. Okay, so that, when you asked me, are there funds to do the grant with to build the park, there are those funds right there. Now, I put that up because that is a lot of money. That is a huge fund balance allocation to be, to set as a minimum to be reserved. You see our sister cities that are managed by the local government commission against us, you'll see we're by far the highest, Oak Ridge in Guilford County, Brevard out west, Kill Devil Hills out east, King in our region, Marion out west, Woodfin, that's the little city right beside Asheville, if there's, that's flooded away, Zebulon, that's right on the wakes of diamond, that's right on the eastern diamond, Fletcher, and then Roxborough. So one of the things you'll need to talk about this spring in your budget process is, how do you put that fund balance to work? Do you want to budget a third, a third, a third? Do you want to use it for your park? You've got a match in here, a park, a park match. So I just put that in front of you, so you know. Now you know. Now, the auditor will come in December, December, January, sometime in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, in December or January, and he'll present the audit, but remember, that's a snapshot backwards. That just tells you where you are in that point in time. We'll, we'll be, we'll be working forwards, okay? Now, I put this out too, this is a leftover from, these, these next things are leftover from the budget, from the budget process last spring. We talked about a COLA in the spring to begin July first, that was, asked to be looked at for January first. If you look at it, if you wanted to do it for January first, this is how it could be funded, okay? That's the way you do it. So you can see, you can do it if you want to, you don't have to go to fund balance to do it, there's going to be unexpended items in the departmental budgets. There is going to be a needed increase to hire a budget to hire a city manager, yes, sir?
Real quick, so a COLA, we would need to double it up later?
Uh, I, that would be theoretically, but it may be four percent. Inflation slowed down, but I, I think these, if you, we're, we've got, we're, I've been kind of like the guy on the Ed Sullivan Show, where he spins a plate on a stick, and then spins another one, and then spins another one, you know, then you got to run down and keep spinning them, right? So we're also, while we're doing all this, we're also in the process of hiring a city manager. So some of this stuff is going to have to intertwine. I think it's my job to get it in front of you guys, so I can get it in front of the manager, they're not cold, he's not, he or she is not cold giving it to you.
So my question, John, would be, then if we hired a city manager now, then come January, if we pass that, he would get a two, two and a half percent raise?
No.
Okay.
No.
He wouldn't have to.
No. And the manager, manager wouldn't do that, an ethical manager wouldn't do that, and that's all we have in our patch to hire for. So it doesn't have to be done tonight, it just needs to be in front of you so you can see how it's done. The second item is to increase the budget to hire a city manager. Now, this is the way we nomenclatured it, but this doesn't mean I'm making anymore, okay? It's just that Mr. Cox left, I've come in, then we've got to hire a new manager. So we didn't budget for three people, so that's what that is. Again, that will need to be done sometime, but that'll need to be done when we finish hiring the manager, just to make sure they line up. Doesn't have to be done tonight, okay? These are just in forefront of you if you need them. The third item is we've discussed this lots, to hire a full-time planning director, we've talked about that, we've talked about that lots. There's a shortage of planning directors, just like there is everything else. There is a shortage of young people coming in local government as a particular rule. People getting their masters of public administration or public affairs degree, by and large, you go to those universities that offer that program, they're most, almost all are interested in nonprofit management, not too many people are interested in local government, you know that. You know how long it took you to find a city manager for Lexington? Took a while. In the old days, it'd take a month, it's just different. Okay, this is, if, if we want to move and hire a planning, a planning director, we can, again, move it from one line, and that comes out of the governor, that comes out of the, that would come out of the contract line item we have with MCI and SC, State Code Enforcement and their other company, and it would come into the line item to hire someone. This is the way you do it. It's up to the council if you want to do it tonight or wait till the new manager's hired, it's entirely up to you. If, if for some reason we don't have a new manager, I expect I'll be standing here in front of you asking for it, so just so the council, unless you decide for me not to stand up anymore, you know?
You ready for three days full time?
I just want to put these out. I'm, I'm, I think, I think I'm, I'm trying to be as responsible as I can to get everything in front of the council, and I defer to the council on whatever action.
So, John, some of the logic on this, with these items, is to get it basically put in place, anticipating the new city manager, so that things can move forward, progress, and not be slowed up with having to then stop and then make changes, and then what do we do now in catching the new person up? So your, your advice is to consider these, so that, again, like the COLA in June, we're not. we're not having to catch back up and, and potentially, or...
The new manager is going to be faced with a really big issue when they come here and that's the sewer fund.
Yeah.
And Randy, Mark, uh, Randy McNeil and DMP is working on, uh, the potential sewer, um, rate as required by the, our, um, contract with them. So I think that's going to be the biggest thing for the council. And then some other items, are you going to extend sewer, that kind of thing? So I'm just putting all this in front of you. I can react to it however you want to. The staff will react to it however you want to. And none of these have to be done tonight. There's not a drop dead date on any of these. These are just in front of you to discuss. Now, if, if you'd, if, it's fine if you talk after the, between now and November or December and hiring a new person, and I'll surely, when the new person comes in, I'll brief them on, on all these items. But I'm just trying to put everything I can in front of the council. That's, so I'll defer to the council now, Mayor. The council wants to hear this.
My recommendation would be that we go ahead and do the planning director.
To approve the planning.
To approve the planning director to be hired.
It's cost us $1,000 a week not to do it. So I don't know why we waited eight weeks to do it. I remember the last planning director cost us a bunch. He didn't know what he was doing. We've had this lady for a couple of years now and I don't think it'd get any better. She, she's on top of her game.
And you and I had that discussion and that's why I put it on here.
Well, that's, well, I'd like to recommend. I mean, because I've seen the last two planners. We've had one good planner and she left because we didn't pay her enough in 2014.
So is that a motion?
Can I make a motion?
Are you seconding?
Second.
Okay, Mayor, there's a motion in second on the floor.
All right, I have a motion in a second on the floor to...
Could I, uh, could I comment on this before we take a motion?
So what about the other items too? That, yeah.
You can, you, you, give me, give me...
Get a motion in a second.
Discussion, discussion, Mayor, yes.
My thoughts on this are just my thoughts. We know how we want to move on this planning director. As a body, we know how we want to do it. I'm still thinking that we need to get the city manager in place first. Just my thoughts. Um, I'll go along with, you know, with, with the board's recommendation, but we all know the end game, who we're going to get, who we want for this job. That's, that's no surprise, but I still think we need to get A before we get B and C. Just, just my opinion.
Well, I accept your opinion, but like John said, we got this stuff here that we pretty well know what we think we want to do. We don't need to keep dragging it on because when the new city manager gets here, he's going to have a bu, a boatload of stuff to worry about. And he won't have to worry about these two or three things right here, right, John? I mean...
That's, that's, well, Mayor, the hardest thing for Trinity is all this, um, our zoning ordinance is, is very well written in a land development plan, but we'll tell you, the stormwater issue is a real issue here. We, we're doing that all the time and that's going to be the, what, that's going to be the curve ball for anybody to learn.
And between it and the sewer, he's going to have a handful of stuff.
That's correct.
My logic on moving forward with this is just with, not discussing publicly, but just changes that already we've come across potentially, um, I, I hate to wait. I, I just, and I, because I do know we want to make this decision, we want to move forward. That's just my thoughts and again, and, and everybody knows what I'm talking about, but I just, I hate to wait, um, and have any other changes.
That's what I was going to say.
That's all I'm asking. That's right.
It's allocating the funds and I'm over...
Yeah. It's just, no, that's, that's all the question.
Yeah, that's good.
Make that clear. It's just allocating the funds.
Yeah, it's just the first step and that, and that's it, just the first step, um...
Of a multi-step process.
Yeah, and so that, that's kind of my logic.
But you can't begin the process with the allocation of the funds.
Right, right.
Well, number one, we have to allocate the funds. Number two, we have to tell the city manager what to do.
Yeah.
So maybe we want to change that motion to approve the...
What's the, uh, what's the breakdown of that 138.7?
Um, that's the, the pay and all their benefits.
Yeah, with, it's, um...
Now, that's an annual pay. That's not a, if we hired somebody, uh, January 1st, it wouldn't be that, it'd be half that.
Yeah.
The benefits are the, uh, FICA or the social security system, the, uh, retirement system, health insurance, uh, that's it.
Yeah.
There are the standard, there's a standard benefits for every city employee.
Yeah.
For every, every municipal employee in North Carolina.
Page 27.
Well, I, I've talked to Jill and she does, she wants her own insurance. That would save us a lot of money.
Well, I think that, uh, we need to withdraw the motion of, that's been made and make the motion to approve the budget amendment.
Yeah.
And then let the city manager proceed with what goes on because we're going to tell them that too, but we're going to need to get the money before we start telling somebody what to do.
And I, and I agree with that because that's what we're doing, is just saying this is amendment to move forward and this gets us down.
You've got to have the money before you can go buy the car.
That's right.
Yeah.
I thought the motion's already made because we're, we're wasting $1,000 a week. That's been going on for three years because we've had nobody to, to, uh, run the show.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't disagree with anything you're saying. In fact, I'm 100% agreeing. The process, we have to adopt the budget before the city manager can do, you can't advertise, you can't discuss, you can't make promises.
I think we're all kind of saying the same thing.
Yeah.
It's just a different, yeah.
Different way, Ed. We can't, we can't make the motion until we get the money.
Right.
So does Debbie and, uh, and Ed withdraw the motion that they just made so we can make another motion?
All right, I'll withdraw that motion and make a motion to accept the budget ordinance.
Yes, that's all we need.
Amend, we want to amend the budget ordinance?
Yes.
Budget amendment.
And that, Mayor, just for clarification, that's Budget Amendment 26 dash 05. That's all we need.
I've got a motion to adj, to amend the, uh, the number he just said, I don't see it. Oh, I'm sorry. Ordinance 26.05, I need a second.
A, a second, as presented.
All right, I got a, a motion in a second. Is any more discussion? All in favor of, uh, amending the budget? Okay.
All right, Mayor, just for the council, I remind the council, the budget is an ordinance. So Crystal and I have the authority to amend some things in the budget ordinance, but not most things. They have to come back to you. So that's why all these are budget amendments.
So we're just, we're just allot the money then. I want to make a motion to allot the money for the city manager.
That's the same thing. It'd be the same thing.
You making a motion for that? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
Well, we're, we're wasting $1,000 a week. This has been going on for...
Ed, we're going to take care of it, okay?
We approve, okay, whatever.
All right, I, I got a second on the, amending the budget for the city manager. Very did, all right. I got a motion in a second, all in favor? All opposed?
All right, Mayor, that leaves item A. As I said, that'll come before the council with the new city manager. Therefore, but as you, but you get to save these slides, you save these, how you pay for it.
Yeah, we're, we're just going to keep on wasting $1,000 a week what we're going to do. We've been doing it for years. We've been wasting way more than that.
All right, do, uh, does anybody have an interest in going ahead and approve the, uh, COLA to be effective January the 1st with, uh, or the employees for the rest of the year at, uh, 2% COLA, I think it was, ain't it?
2 and 1/2% Mayor.
2 and 1/2%.
So, John, present this again, explain this again to us.
Um...
Can you back up, please?
Okay, with the budget process, and I apologize, I was not here. I'm just carrying for what I was told.
Great, thank you.
I think, uh, it was also during, it was kind of a, a difficult window for the city. Um, the council, Crystal did the budget. She asked for a 2 and 1/2% cost of living increase. That's based on the social security change for this year. Okay, the, the council asked that put off to, um, January, to be reviewed in January.
Can you back up?
Yeah, let's put it up here so I can, uh... So if, if, on page 23, Mayor, of your book, while they're trying to make the machine go back... I'm kind of like an old horse too. I, I'm like the best technology. What we would do is we would decrease, John, you might want to... Sorry, thank you. Uh, we would, um, use, uh, $5,985 out of general government, $2,752 out of public services. That, and you would match that, you would increase those two accounts and you'd take $8,737 from your contingency fund. The same way for the sewer, uh, $2,752 and then you would take, you would fund it with the contingency which you've already approved of $2,752. So that's the way it works, Mayor. I, I would, um, just so the council understands, if you'd rather, I have no problem giving that to the new city manager. It may give them a chance to look real good. You know, I'm not up here to get praise. I'm just, you know, I think that, uh, there's the funds there if you want to do it. It doesn't have to be done tonight. You can do it in the January meeting and retroactively if you want to.
We had these discussions in the budget meetings.
Right.
And we voted against it. So when I look at it, we voted against it for that budget, we don't need to consider it again to the next budget.
That's what, how I feel, I mean...
So that's a motion in a second.
Yeah, we, we have the highest hours anywhere in North Carolina.
Well, we don't have to, well, I'm not asking for a motion, Mayor. I just put it...
You say, you say no, in the actual, I'm, I'm just saying, I don't think, we've had these discussions already. I don't think it needs to be considered again to the next budget. I think council and lower is agreeing.
Okay, I got that. Mayor, Mayor, with that being said then, we're just, uh...
Don't, don't make a difference, Mayor. Barry just said when we had the budget meeting that we wanted to look at again in six months. John found that in a... John found that in a minute, so he said, well, they, they want to review it in six months, so we're reviewing it in six months. Okay, all right, we're moving on. What's next, John?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move on from, uh, from, uh, um...
We got the traffic ordinance, light trespassing.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm sorry. Yeah, Mayor, the first thing is I do want to talk about, uh, Revolution Randolph here in Mississippi.
It is a resolution.
Oh, okay.
This will take your approval, Mayor. Um, Randolph County is part of the North Carolina anniversary of the 250th anniversary of the resolution, revolution. As I said, General Greene came right through here. Why did General Greene come through here? Because the Quakers didn't take sides in the revolution and treated all the wounded and fed the soldiers. Uh, that, uh, that's why General Cornwallis chased him through here for the same reason. Next time you drive on I-73, 74, 220 South and you cross the Martha McGee Bell Bridge over Deep River, Martha McGee Bell's husband fought the war with General Washington. General Washington was not at Yorktown yet. Martha, the, General Cornwallis went to, General Cornwallis went to the, the Bell Farm and demanded she give, uh, her livestock, her hay, her house to the crown. She said no, and, and they didn't destroy it or burn it down. The Revolutionary War was fought in Randolph County as a civil war. There were loyalists and patriots. They were fought. In Ashboro, Colonel Andrew Balfour of Balfour School in the Balfour neighborhood was on leave. He fought with General Washington in the north. He was an ally. He was a friend of General Washington. General, Colonel Balfour was murdered on his front yard by folks from Randolph County and Alamance County and Stanley County down into Mecklenburg County that were loyalists under the David Fanning. David Fanning was a famous Tory leader, um, Tory militia leader, uh, for the, was a loyalist. He was for the king, he was for the crown, and, uh, he is, he hated Colonel Balfour because Colonel Balfour was the sheriff. And the sheriff collected the property tax. And who did they collect it from? The loyalists. And who didn't have to pay it? Patriots. So, uh, if you think taxes are an issue now, they've been around this country for 250 years. So Colonel Balfour was murdered on his front porch to pay the nation, to pay his wife back, made her the postmaster, and, uh, Colonel Fanning escaped, went to Canada where he is hailed as a hero, and later died in England where he was hailed as a hero. So it depends on which side you are. That being said, Mayor, I'd like to ask the council, adopt a resolution at, uh, recognizing the celebration of America's 250th birthday and had locked it, this, and the resolutions in your packet, and, uh, ask the council to approve the resolution.
All right, now I need a motion to approve that resolution.
I make a motion that we approve the resol, resolution for Revolution Randolph, uh, to adopt this resolution. Wow, say that three times.
Evolution, resolution. Yeah, say that, anymore. All right, I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Debbie's second. Any discussion?
I remember when they used to have the Civil War reenactment down here. I come home one time, started backing my driveway and them cannons went off. I started to jump out and run for the woods.
That was around here too.
All right, I got a motion in a second, uh, all in favor? All right, thank you.
All right, Mayor, that passes. Before we move, the mayor and I had a mayor managers meeting for Randolph County and the city of Ashboro. Sign shop has graciously, uh, made, agreed to make, uh, Revolutionary Randolph signs for all the municipalities, banners, whatever. So we'll be coming back to you shortly with what we can do here in Trinity. We can put some signage up in schools or put some signage up at city hall or maybe hang some banners around town. That's, that's the, the Randolph one and then you can put the Trinity logo in that or whatever. Uh, that's all I have right now, Mayor. Now, Ms. Wood has a couple of items for the council to review.
Well, uh, we got the, um, traffic ordinance, who's taking?
Yep, Ms. Wood's got all... Yep, yes, sir. She's got light sound, Mayor, and parking.
Okay, as, as you, you will recall, Carrie Underwood, Carrie Underwood, I'm sorry, Carrie Spencer came here and was working with you on codifying the, uh, general ordinances. There were several ordinances and they were kind of all over the place. Um, and so she worked really hard in getting all those together. She explained to the council at that time that you will be tweaking those ordinances as you come along. And there have been, um, a couple of items that are, um, bringing for you tonight. Code enforcement has, um, requested some changes be made. One is the revision in the parking ordinance, and that would be, um, making, uh, the fines payable to the city of Trinity in person at city hall instead of it going through a traffic court. And they, um, this is so that, um, because they've had, they ran into some problems with people parking in the street and the, uh, the staff has, has talked with, um, with the sheriff's office, and this is a resolution of what they felt would, they could do. If we would, they would issue the tickets if we would collect the fines. And so that has, we have made that change in the parking, uh, traffic code. And also, the second change is under, uh, chapter seven, part five, uh, light trespass. And that, the ordinance that we have had was very general and did not give a measuring tool as to how to measure, um, what is light trespass? What does that, what, um, would be considered a trespassing of light from one property to the other? And so she, Carrie has made some changes here and, um, it is going to be using foot candle. Um, and we will be needing to probably purchase a tool for our code enforcement, um, to be able to measure, um, that from one property to another when those complaints come through. So those are the two changes that, um, are before you tonight. So, do you have any questions?
Do you need the lighting, is that from any of me grandfather's, is this all moving forward or do you...
There are some exceptions in there. There are some exceptions in there, I'm sorry, um, that you can see, um, that's on page 35, there's a list of 12 separate different, um, like, lighting for worker safety as mandated by the Occupational Safety and Health Administration, traffic control, street lights installed prior to the effective date, uh, temporary emergency lights, moving vehicle lights, there, there is some exceptions to, to the, um, to the ordinance. But there has been a like trespassing ordinance in effect. The problem that code enforcement and, um, staff has felt would be difficult to deal with is, um, taking an opinion out of the equation, giving, giving a measurement tool to measure what that is, that's correct.
Get a way to measure your problem.
Yes.
What is the cost of that, uh, machine?
Um, when I looked it up, it's probably somewhere between a hundred to $200 for the tool to measure.
And that'll just be fine?
And it may be that our code enforcement, because that is, um, contracted, the service is contracted, it may be that they have that tool. Uh, if the city is doing their own, we would certainly need to have the tool to do that.
If they remain in violation, it's just a civil penalty? Or how?
Yes.
To get them to come around?
Yes.
Is that the same way with the, uh-
It'll be subject to the-
Street parking, it's, it's a civil penalty?
Well, the street parking is not, it didn't take the misdemeanor, uh, the class-three misdemeanor out of that, uh, in case the, the fines were not collected, then they're able to take it. We can give that to our attorney and, and work with it through that way, and he'd work with the DA's office on trying to handle those situations, but, um, the day-to-day parking ticket that would be placed on the window of a vehicle, uh, would be collected at the City Hall instead of in Ashboro, it, through traffic court.
Thank you.
How many pages of ordinances have we had now?
Well, this is just tweaking a couple of pages that's in there, it's not really adding a lot to, it's not adding to it other than the being able to measure the, um, measure it, and it does list the exceptions in here, there were no exceptions in the original one, um, and also the, the payment of the traffic tickets coming to the City Hall.
My, my problem is, there are so many violations, it's not funny, and I don't really care. If neighbors, get along with neighbors, why do you go up there and harass somebody then on the other side? Numerous times you get one neighbor against the other, and they tie the city up and spend a fortune.
That can't happen, yes, sir.
And the other one I'd like to have, you shouldn't be able to go around from ward to ward in your car and turn people in. I think there needs to be a limit, because you had one man turned in 61 complaints in a year, and only one other person complained about what he was complaining, so you have to have the code enforcement right out there to check all this garbage. I think it ought to be, you know, limited to your ward to be able to complain, I shouldn't be able to ride over the steeple gate or anyplace else and, and be riding around looking and complaining. I mean, we, we, this problem has been a, uh, it's caused the city a fortune.
It can be, and, um, some communities, how they, they deal with, with it is, um, that they say they're not going to take anonymous complaints, that you have to give your name and, and if you want to file a complaint. The city of Trinity does accept anonymous complaints, so, you know, that's something you can consider if you feel like the complaints are, um, they're too many, and they're not, and they're, and they're just calling them in, and they're, and they're taking them anonymously, because when someone calls, we do send code enforcement, regardless if they leave their name or not.
Most, most of the planks we get that Ed's talking about, we know who they come from.
Why do we have to go check them out? And I've heard some of these old people have no place to go, so they hang out at City Hall. Same old people come up here and call, aggravate the staff because they're lonely.
Jill, do we need to make two separate motions on this, to adopt these, or do we just make them together?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be correct.
Okay, good. Do we have to have two motions, Jill, or this, this one?
I think, um-
Why do them separate?
I'm sure that it needs to be separate, so-
Okay.
The first one is for the traffic ordinance.
I make a motion that we do adopt the proposed traffic ordinance amendment.
I'll second. I think that's a danger, you got a second?
Yeah, Ed, yeah, I have a motion and a second.
All right, all right, all in favor?
And then for the light?
And then amendments to the light, the lighting trespass ordinance.
All right, I'll take a motion to, uh, to adopt the amendments on the light and-
Trespass.
Uh, thing, trespass.
As presented. Yeah, I, I make a motion as well on this, that we do adopt the amendment. It makes sense, it's, it's already in place. I do like the exemptions, because without the exemptions in place, um, there's ambiguity, and, uh, this helps clarify it, so there is less time, like Ed was talking about, less time wasted, because we can cite the exemptions and say, "Okay." So, I make a motion to adopt the amendment.
You got a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you, Ms. Jill.
Thank you.
Thank you, and obviously Jill's a contractor, she does a good job for us too. All right, Mayor, what's next?
Uh, we got the-
The city manager?
Sound and update.
We did that, okay, Mayor. We, uh, Ronnie and I have met with Audio and Light Equipment Experience and Service about the audio system in here, they made some changes, but we are getting a, a, a proposal for the council review to improve the sound in here, and maybe, uh, improve the video, so folks watching it on YouTube aren't getting us three or five seconds delayed or, or not having us at all. I just put forward that before the council, just to let you know, we have done that and we're working on that. I'm going to get to what Ed said here just in a minute about, uh, some tips for city council. Now, I'm just putting this out for you, after 35 years of doing this, and I just thought it'd be kind of nice to, uh, review this so we all understand, and I'm going to try to hit Ed's, just say what Mr. Lord just said here on this, one of these tips, thanks for mentioning it, Mr. Lord. Uh, I just remind the coun, the council's a legislative body and speaks with one voice. Now, that doesn't, uh, mean you agree on everything, that just means when you vote on it in this past, it's pretty much over. You can revisit it if you want to go through Roberts' Rules of Orders, but generally it's over, and generally this reason it's over is because of the next thing, you got to vote on the next agenda. So I just want to say that, remind you that you are a legislative body. Personnel matters, or there's responsibility of the city manager, that we were just trying to figure out with doing the budget ordinance. Uh, code enforcement activities are staff responsibility. We have to be responsible for that, but we have to use common sense and good judgment. That's what Mr. Lord's saying. You have to use common sense and good judgment, and we have to, for example, if we have a 10-foot setback, and the house is nine feet, eight inches off the line, I don't think we're going to go out there and say that's a zoning ordinance. Likewise, if it's two feet, we're going to say that's a zoning code. So we have to use common sense and good judgment, and we can, and, um, that's why it's important that the staff be connected with the public too. It never hurts to use common sense and good judgment, and understand that in the life of a city, we're a very young city, Bob worked for some other cities that are, they're almost as old as the, the country, so that's, that's really important, and I thank you for bringing that to me, Mr. Lord, that's why it's on there. So, uh, remember the, we want to stay focused on our mission and policy, leave us up to the details, we get ground up in the details here at City Hall anyway. Um, as I say, the gears of government do grind, they grind slowly, but they do grind. Keep open communication with key staff, please stay communication, try not determine predetermined policy outcomes, I'm as bad at that as anybody. Uh, encourage to contact people, City Hall, if you're asking, you don't know, that's what we're down here for, and don't ever be afraid to lean on the mayor, the city attorney, or the city manager. That's what we're paid to do, we're paid to be the subject matter experts, or at least get the answer. Okay. All right, Mayor, the next item is potential development of city-owned property. We've, we, uh, worked on this with our city engine, one of our city engineers, Mr. Rich Glover. You see right here, Mayor, this is, Mayor, may I approach them? Uh, this is Mayor, I may not be on the video, but it will be one of these days. This is City Hall, this is our current City Hall, this is the parking lot, I believe that's where we put our Christmas tree, we're going up soon. Okay, this could be a new municipal building here, on this property, now to use this property would take a bio-retention park, but those are all over town. We put a picnic shape shelter there, and there's a shuffleball court, uh, pickleball courts for, it was, it was a senior center, that's what we, we came up with, the idea of a senior center, I think that's in our Parks Master Plan. I'll show you the footprint, just what it could look like on the inside. This will be the first floor, as, as we've discussed, would have a great room, three classes, a reception, a game room area, men's and women's bathrooms, a kitchen, and then three, the mechanical room, and two offices. The second floor, Mayor, would have council chambers, which we've talked about being connected to City Hall, a conference room, reception area, a breakroom locker room, three offices for the sheriffs, uh, deputies for serving, and a men's and women's bathroom. Now, why have the sheriff's department in there? We plan, we just got the park grant, and we plan to build the park right out here, out the back door, this can be Parks and Rec headquarters one of these days, so we don't lose the improvement of this property. Uh, next item, that's, that's just, that's not what we have to do with it, that's just what can be done with it, just so the council has that in front of them. Okay, uh, uh, some public policy decision-making outcomes, it's very hard to see in the short term how important decisions you make, but in the long term, they're really important.
Are we going to discuss what you just talked about? I mean, best I know, there's no sewer line going over there. I mean, you got nothing but trees down there, and now we paid 341,000 for it.
Well, that, that was the appraisal value.
Well, maybe we should have got a second appraiser, because that appraiser got a lot in Thomasville, High Point, and Archdale. I'll tell you what, my opinion is, it's nothing but a hole. Put it on the market and see what it brings, and the appraiser's got to have insurance so we could sue him. I mean, that place down there, everybody I've talked to said it's a joke, 341,000 for a acre of lot with no sort.
Well, I, I can't answer that other than the appraisers bound by the North Carolina law and their own professional code of ethics, to, to appraise the property, that's what is appraised for, the council followed the law in purchasing it. If the council wants to declare its surplus, the council would have to declare its surplus and then sell it via the general statutes, but you can't just sell it, you can't sue anybody because you don't like the value of it, and the councils purchased the property, that was the motion that was made and seconded and approved for a public purpose.
And I, and I've inquired about selling the land, and it would be at a loss, not just how, but just how it's set up, it would be, we would take a hit, and so-
You, Mayor, again, the council would have to follow the whole, the general statutes has a way to dispose of public property, Mayor, so-
Take you six months.
And, and it's, it's, the, the council owns, the city owns the property now, the council's the steward of the property, you asked me what could it be used for, and I showed you.
Yeah, I agree.
That was a conversation when we talked about, uh, some of the old council was-
And there's funds available now for this too, that, that was something different now, potentially with, uh, the state.
Yes, because of the, uh, rural development and the United States Department of Agriculture, there are funds available for this.
Well, see, you, if you put a citizen, if you put a citizen center right there, and you've got pickleballs, both of them be, both of them's going to be busy.
Mayor, there is sewer, sewer access there, that's why I appraise.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I thought we had a septic tank here at City Hall, and that-
We do at City Hall, there's a-
Yeah, but that doesn't-
City Hall property is on septic tanks, but there's sewer access on this property.
Yeah.
It actually goes in front of City Hall and then cuts over to the property, so it's closer to the, the white street. Y'all don't want to pay the tap fee down there?
Well, you know, my problem is, I say nobody thinks this is a good deal, I mean, the citizens don't get involved in anything.
That's what they elected you for, Ed.
No, not for stupid things like paying 341,000 for an acre of land, the tax value was $57,000.
Well, it's done, so we're talking about this other stuff.
It's another stupid idea.
All right, John, continue, please.
If, if, Mr. Lord, if you, it would, um, I'd, I would ask you to reach out to Mr. Will Hoyt, get the process to, uh, the city declare surplus property, and Mr. Will Hoyt can get you the statute, and then you can make a motion to that regard. I don't have that statute now to put in front of you how to do it, if I would, I would give it to you myself.
I think that was another disgusting mistake.
I, I can't answer that, I can just tell you what, what I was directed to do. Okay, uh, some council decisions are easy to implement, and have shorter long-term value, the parking ordinance, you just made one that's pretty easy to implement. Some councils are difficult to implement, but may have permanent value, establishing sewer in the ground, has permanent value. You can't measure the value of it, you can measure the cost, what a project costs, but you can't measure the value of it. I'll give you an example, this is a Trinity-specific example, we're building a second horse main to High Point, okay? Can be some serious discussion about that, the value of it or not the value of it. Well, third item is have unpredictable, some decision council meetings have predictable outcomes and sometimes have unforeseen or uncertain outcomes. Now, when we decided to build that line to High Point, we did it for a, for a specific public policy reason. We only had a million gallons in Thomasville, and the rate was expensive, we're going, that gives us a second million gallons, two million gallons a day, to fill in 17.9 square miles, and I'm getting ready to show you that here in a minute, and it's a cheaper rate. What we couldn't have guessed when we began that project is what's happening right now, right now, right as we speak, right now. There's a massive study underway for Greensboro, Jamestown, High Point, does that sound familiar? Archdale, Randolph County, Ashboro, Randleman, to build a massive treatment plant on the Deep River. Greensboro's about out of capacity, High Point East Side's about out of capacity, Jamestown and Archdale have to go into High Point East Side, that was a regional decision, the EPA wanted, High Point wanted a federal grant and federal loans, and, uh, EPA said that'd be fine, but you got to let Archdale and Jamestown in your sewer plant, that's how Archdale's in the High Point sewer plant. Okay? When we made that decision, we could have never imagined that connecting us to High Point connects us to all our original partners. We're now connected, we're going to be connected to High Point, to Greensboro, to Randleman, to Archdale, to Ashboro. That connects us, Trinity, to the rest of the county, and that's really important if you live down where Bob and I live, because, as I told you many times, we think this far ahead in Ashboro, like Ashboro's the center of the universe, and I'm here to tell you it's not. Now, I'll tell you, if I say that to Ashboro Rotary Club, I probably can't get out the door, but that's okay too. Okay, so that's a huge benefit of this decision, and in the long term, that'll put Trinity access to federal money, because Congressman Hudson was just at the big, the Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority water plant a couple of weeks ago, and really likes all these- a couple of weeks ago, and really likes all these concepts, and said, there's only going to be federal money if you do it regionally.
I think, I think everything's going to go regional, because it, it's hard to go by yourself, because everybody's paying the same price when you go regional, everybody's paying that price together.
And we live regionally anyway, don't we? How many of us work, unless you work for the city, how many of us work in Trinity? All seven of us. Well, you were from home, yeah. Right, all sev- all seven of us, right.
I don't work at all.
You retired. Okay, so what I'm saying is, is that, that's, when you made this decision, that wasn't the point of you made this decision.
Well, we did.
But in the long run, fifty years from now, that's going to look like a really great decision. It works in reverse, too. Ashboro built Lake Reese because we couldn't wait for the Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority, because we had all our textile mills. We kept our textile mills longer than everybody else did, so now we have, we have real expensive water in Ashboro because we have too much water. You'd think it'd be cheaper, but you're paying debt on all that system you built to hold it up. So you have to, you kind of have to, so that's why I'm saying, public policy decisions, you can have predictable outcomes, we're going to get a cheaper rate. Unpredictable outcomes, wow, this is going to be great for Trinity, Trinity. It's going to be, it's really, if you made, waved a magic wand, that's the way you'd do it to begin with. You can't unring the bell, but when we made the first decision to go to Thomasville, that was the best decision, so, that's all I'm saying. I'm just using that example to say, that's a real decision, that's really going to pay for Trinity a very long time, in a lot more ways than just the immediate sewer.
My opinion is, if you want to live in High Point or Winston-Salem, go. Trinity had its own identity. People tell me all the time they can't get off the interstate, I seen one woman killed up there, fenced farm, and that rush got killed on the interstate. So the interstate wasn't built of global leaf, that's the biggest, one of the biggest complaints I get, is people say, we can't get to work anymore, we live down past Steeple Gate down that area, said we had to wait through two or three red lights to get through. And as far as I'm concerned, we lost millions leaving Thomasville going to High Point. I talked to the mayor today of Thomasville for forty-five minutes, a very interesting, smart man. He more or less said, they don't think we're very smart, and Archdale don't think we're very smart, so that's opinion. I called him back in two thousand fourteen and talked to the city manager. He just said, well, a lot of your decisions, you're not very smart. He didn't say stupid, but he just said, you're not very smart, so.
The, the other side of that coin's true, too. The city manager probably should have been negotiating with the Trinity city manager not to lose his biggest customer, who pays on time.
Well, we didn't communicate with them, that's the problem.
I'm not arguing that, I'm just telling you, the street runs two ways in public policy decisions.
Well, I asked him about the eight million dollars that they offered us for our allotment. He said, well, we got to have the city council, but you're not going to get eight million dollars no more, probably two or three, so we, we threw away six million dollars.
No, because we still have the allotment.
But you-
We weren't even negotiating with the city council, we were negotiating with Aitken County.
Yeah.
Well, you didn't go over and talk to the city manager.
Yeah, we did. I was in the meeting.
Yeah, good.
Mayor and the manager, and council members.
Well, I want to talk about, I want to bring up that, because while Ed's on that subject, I'll just follow along with my next slide. Trin- Trinity is almost eighteen square miles. Now, I want to talk about how urban, urban versus how urban is urban, because he just mentioned traffic. Ashboro is almost eighteen square miles. Trinity has about seventy-two hundred people. Ashboro has about thirty thousand. I'll just go through these, it makes it a little easier to see. And I've done this, Mayor, not on one slide, because television, YouTube has a har- hard time seeing slides. So Trinity's plus or minus eighteen square miles, Ashboro's plus or minus eighteen square miles. Trinity has seventy-two hundred people, Ashboro has just shy of thirty thousand people. Trinity has about thirty-five hundred structures in round numbers, Ashboro has eleven thousand. Trinity has about twelve miles of city-maintained streets, Ashboro has a hundred and one. Trinity has one law enforcement officer per shift, that costs six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Ashboro has ten officers per shift, that costs six million, three hundred thousand. We don't know how many calls Trinity has, Ashboro has twenty-five thousand a year, not two hundred and fifty, not two thousand, five hundred, twenty-five thousand. So if you, three, three city cars at a call, that's not three calls, that's one. Gil Rand has, uh, Gil Rand and our friends next door at Fair Grove have a eighteen hundred and sixty fire calls, and we have two hundred and twenty, these are inside the city limits, two hundred and twenty fire hydrants, Ashboro has five thousand calls, sixteen hundred and eighteen fire hydrants. Trinity, we pick up about thirty-six hundred tons of municipal solid waste, that's what garbage is called in this business, MSW. We pay about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tipping fees, we make a thirty-six, hundred and sixty-nine stops a week, and we got a fifteen dollar, uh, monthly fee. Ashboro takes away twenty thousand tons of municipal solid waste, six hundred thousand dollars in tipping fees, ten thousand stops, and pays a eighteen dollar monthly fee. Trinity has sixty-one miles of sewer line, ten lift stations, two million gallons of treatment capacity, nine hundred and fifty manholes, a maintenance budget, not a treatment budget, not debt service, just maintenance, that's seven hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Is treatment in that? It is, no, it's not. That's what I thought. Ashboro has two hundred and forty miles of sewer line, thirty lift stations, nine million gallons of treatment, five million, five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five manholes, and just to maintain the system, it costs two point eight million dollars. Tax rate, look at the tax rate difference, we just talked about taxes. Trinity has a ten cents tax. Trinity does not have its own fire department, has a fire tax of fifteen cents. Ashboro's taxed as forty-six cents. Ashboro has a fire department also, so that's a quarter, twenty-five cents, of Ashboro's seventy-one cents is taxed. So that's what, three times expensive, more expensive to have Ashboro? So density doesn't always buy you cheaper. Now, Trinity has one park to build, Ashboro has eight neighborhood parks, one nine-hole golf course, one tennis complex, one minor league baseball park, one public library, one senior adult center, one recreation center with indoor swimming pool, two outdoor nationally, two outdoor res- swimming pools, and the new nationally-recognized sports center. The reason I say that's, Ashboro's two hundred and fifty years old, that all that didn't happen overnight. So, when, when you, after the turn of the year, when you begin your discussions, do your budget and your code, and you're talking about strategic planning, you're going to have to figure out how urban is urban. Because in the same square miles, you have very urban, and we're pretty rural here, and from what I hear, people like rural. But you'll have to react to that, you'll have to, as a council, you'll have to react to that. I just put that up there to give you some, to make sure, sometimes we don't, while we're all meaning the same, or using the same language, it doesn't mean the same. If you live in northern Virginia, you may take twenty-five or thirty minutes to back out of your driveway.
That's why I don't live up there.
We can get to Myrtle Beach in two hours and forty-five minutes, three hours from here, you can take three hours to get across Atlanta or Los Angeles. So, urban is urban, it just depends.
I've been all over this country in the truck, ain't no place like home. Hey, I remember when the tax rate was five cents, and we got along good and all this-
So the tax rate is pretty easy to figure, Mayor, here in, uh, it's just that your tax rate divided by, your tax value divided by one hundred times point one zero. So, a hundred thousand divided by one hundred times point zero five is fifty bucks. So that concludes, Mayor, I've tried to use my time these last months to kind of develop, I'm trying to bridge between Mr. Cox and our new manager, and I've tried to use all this time to, uh, prepare you for-
I tell you, traffic's bad, my daughter says, are you at work? And she says, yeah, fifty-five minutes, twelve miles.
We great, we great appreciate you.
Or you could be like my daughters, Mary, and live in New York, and if you don't-
You can walk.
Yeah. Fifty-five minutes train ride.
Yep.
And she works for the city, you would think she knows somebody in North Carolina who works for cities. Wouldn't you? Okay, Mayor, now I would ask if the council has, unless the council has anything else, Mayor, now would be the appropriate time to go into that closed session.
Yeah, who's next on the agenda? Are you done?
I'm done, Mayor.
All right, well, I'll take a motion for closed session.
Make a motion for closed session in order to interview and consider the qualifications for prospective candidates to serve as the city manager. Move to go into closed session pursuant to section one forty-three, Dex three eighteen eleven, uh, of North Carolina Bill of Action.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and second, all in favor? Okay.
All right, Mayor, before we go off YouTube and off the, yes, before we go off YouTube, I'd like to tell the folks here and the folks watching that we don't expect any more council action tonight. This is just to review the candidate's board, the city manager vacancy. So, uh, you're welcome to stay, you'll have to go outside and wait while the council debates, they'll come back in, they'll adjourn the meeting, that's all that's left to do. It's up to you if you want to hang around, I think it's pretty cool up there, though. So, uh, but it's up to, it's up to you, you, it's your meeting, you being the worker.